President Halpern, Members of the Board, and Dr. McCleod. Item number 613673, a number that passed the docket in February with no regard. But I am not just a number. I am collateral damage of erratic decision-making. My name is Dylan Jones. I am a mother to three amazing kids. I have a daughter going to NYU next year. I have twin boys, one of whom has special needs. I have a wife. I'm a special educator. Before I became a special educator, I was a research librarian. My son was eight when he was identified by the Special Education Team in Carlsbad. I was so inspired by their knowledge, skill, compassion, and support that I changed career paths. I wanted to be that. I wanted to help kids. And here I am. I stand before you, not a number, but a teacher that has a heart, emotions, a family, friends, and the support of some of the best educators in the world. The teaching staff at CBN and beyond is unparalleled. They are collaborative, student-centered, engaging, empathetic, and smart. I have never been reprimanded, given an action plan, or told repeatedly that I need to improve a specific area of my teaching. I have never had my performance called into question during formal observations or criticized about my reports, data collection, management of instructional assistance, or that I needed to improve my relationships with students and families. On the contrary, I have been told my students aren't in my interpersonal skills. And interpersonal skills are the heart of special education. My students improved their Lexile levels by an average of 220 points in less than a year. That exceeds the yearly expected growth of 89 to 110 points for our typical student. On average, my students increased by two grade levels on their I-Ready Math and Reading Diagnostics from the beginning of the year until now. In fact, I had two students jump three grade levels. I have many successes. These are some of my measurable achievements. My number was brought to the board in February without my knowledge. No way to defend myself. It was shrouded in darkness. I didn't find out about my non-re elect until March 7. It is important to inform you, the Board, of how this was mishandled by our site principal. Between March 7th and March 11th, several incidents occurred that were unethical, not professional, and not best practice. I was told I would not be re-elected because I was "not a good fit." I would like to ask the Board, what does that mean? And why was my non-re elect handled in this manner? This is my story. I'm not a number, and I have a good fit for Delmar. Thank you.
Hello, Members of the Board. I am speaking tonight to please ask you to reject and overturn the non-re election of Dylan Jones, an education specialist currently working at Carlin Delmar Elementary School in the Learning Lab. Last week, after school hours and after speaking with her principal, Julie Lerner, about a number of topics, she was told that she would not be recommended for permanent status for the fall of school year. Not only did the news of Dylan being let go come as a shock to her, but it also came as a shock to all the staff who know and have worked closely with her. It was explained to Dylan that the decision was not due to conduct or job performance, but because she was not a right fit for Delmar. This is something that personnel, teachers, staff, principals in the district are told time and time again. No specific reasons are given. Dylan is one of the most positive, hard-working, and dedicated staff members I know. She's a valued and trusted member of the Special Education and School Team. She works cooperatively with all staff, always says yes when asked to do something, and is collaborative and creative in finding solutions to support students. Her work ethic, compassion, knowledge, and skill make her an effective teacher, which in turn helps her students make progress in their learning. The relationship she has formed with students and families, as well as the Delmar community, make her the ideal teacher for our district. If anyone was the right fit for Delmar, it is Dylan. Lastly, the way the district went about informing Dylan that she would not be re-elected was not best practice or compassionate and least fit. At the last board meeting, the district read off the number indicating a layoff. Dylan is not a number. She's a person who is very good at her job and works hard to support her own family. Many procedural violations by Dylan's principal and HR were made in the non-re election process, which you have heard about. Choosing to not recommend a staff for permanent status with no reason does not support the students in our district and is also not a student-centered decision. Thank you for taking the time to allow me to read this letter, and I please, please, please urge you to overturn this decision.
Good afternoon, President Halpern, Members of the Board, and Dr. McCleod. My name is David Skinner. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Carlin Delmar, and I've worked in Delmar since 1993. And I'm coming to ask you to reconsider the decision you made at the February 16th board meeting. At that time, item 11.1, the not discussed, was brought forward, and Resolution 2022-06 was brought by Assistant Superintendent Ryan Stanley, asking the Board to not re-elect one of our second-year probationary teachers. At the time I was here, and I assumed that whoever that person was had to have already been informed of this, because that is the practice in the past in besting knowledge. I've since learned that the aim boy is Dylan. Dylan's my co-teaching partner at CBN, and I worked closely with her for two years. We share several students, and I have firsthand knowledge of her skills as an educator and her commitment to the students in our district. The decision to not make Dylan a permanent part of this teaching staff is a mistake. I'm not exaggerating when I say she is the most effective ed specialist that I've ever worked with. I'm not embarrassed to say that there have been a few times in my career that I've cried to being a teacher. This decision is definitely why I've done it. I cried when I heard it, and I could not believe it. I still can't believe it. And I will say again, Delmar is making a mistake. Dylan is extremely well-regarded by the staff at Carlin Delmar, and I've sat in many meetings with her and parents, and she always conducts herself professionally and with warmth and consideration for the students. Primarily, her skills is what makes her a valuable colleague. She's only received positive evaluations and never been placed on any kind of assistance plan. I'm not aware of any budgetary limitations or a lack of declining enrollment at Carlin Delmar. In fact, our student population is CBN's record levels. We will be hiring another person next year. I can only conclude that the decision not to bring her back has to be based on some other criteria, some other issues at play here. We already have a serious turnover problem among our special ed staff, and I hope you will investigate this, or at least discuss it during your closed session. Last of all, the manner of this issue was handled does not reflect well on Delmar. It may be true, though, that the minimum legal requirements regarding second-year probationary teachers have been met. However, the manner of achieving this important to this decision was unprofessional and frankly unkind. I do not believe this board would approve if they knew all of the details. And I understand fairly well the legal requirements, and I understand the district rights and the March 15 deadline. However, the timing of all this has made it impossible for Dylan to address the board and present her sign before the March 15 deadline. This is unfair. This week, she was told she had no right to a hearing by the Board, which may be true. We're not asking for a tribunal. We only ask that you discuss it. I ask that you rescind that decision or decide to not accept her resignation. And also, I hope that you would work to ensure that situations like this do not happen in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that you know that the Board cannot respond directly to public. Okay, here are item 1.3 adjournment in closed session. The board will be in closed session to discuss to consider the following matters. Consider personnel issues, government code section 54957. One matter is as identified on the agenda. 2.2 Conference of Labor Negotiators, GC54957.6. One matter as is identified on the agenda. 2.3 Consider personnel issues, government code section 54957. One matter as is identified on the agenda. 2.4 Conference of Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9. One matter as is identified on the agenda. 2.5 Conference of Legal Counsel, Pending Litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9 D1. One matter as is identified on the agenda. Just a clarification, 2.4 was Government Code Section 54956.9 D1. The board will now adjourn to closed session at 4:56 PM.
You're heading 3.1, call to order open sessions. For rekeeping open sessions, it is 3:00 PM. Sorry to be late. By law, our policy has been notified between the meeting and report by law. Any member of the public addressed the Board has either been rejected or any non-agenda item that the public has kindly presented, I request the Board, therefore, asks you to consider the circumstances at this time. How is running efficient? Speakers who support non-agenda items need to be turned in prior to item 4.2 during a public prayer regarding non-agenda items. Still, we recognize a call to the podium at 3:00 PM. You'll have three minutes to address the governing board. If it is in this official conversation on a particular agenda item, the speaker somebody determined by item 5.7 during a public regarding agenda items. If you recognize the calls of the podium when you're requested, agenda item comes up, and you'll have three minutes to address the governing board. 3.2 is a report of action taken for such a people. The governing board then put a session and noted to approve the resignation agreement concerning employee number 116747 by a vote of 4 to 0. We also met Jennifer Pearson, who is being brought forward tonight to support Delmar Heights CPR, and she will be introduced shortly. 3.3 is the president's pledge of allegiance. Now welcome one of our famous members.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will read my words and tell the agenda. Is there a person who can read that? There it is. May I? Four correspondence.
Good evening. The superintendent's office has received the following correspondence regarding district business on these topics. DMUSD Health and Safety Plan, quote-unquote, guidelines and practices, masks sensible in COVID, Delmar Heights COVID Bill, staffing, sixth-grade camp, and summer programs. That concludes the superintendent's correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just checking to see if you have agenda items. Okay. So, 4.2 is during a public regarding non-agenda items. Will call the members of the public who have requested to address the governing board regarding a third of the agenda. Members of the public would like to address the governing board regarding a non-agenda item. Let's complete that segment. Speaker somebody sign up, please. So we have first, by, as I call it, two names at a time. Danielle, followed by Orisa.
Everybody ready?
No, no. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a parent that resides within a Delmar community school district. I originally moved to the district when my son was just a year old because I was impressed with the district's accolades. My son has been a part of this district his whole academic life. He's in fourth grade. In that time, he had been transferred to four different schools within the district. Do you know how detrimental these moves have been for him? Any child would have trouble adjusting to change. However, for a child that has special needs who thrives on schedule and routine, this has been devastating. I'd like to take a moment to explain what the lack of a special needs parent is like. While most parents are taking their kids to extracurricular activities, we spend our days balancing between therapy appointments, doctors, school, and specialists. Add into that evaluations, IEP meetings, and understanding a new language when we are served with prior written notices. If you don't know what a prior written notice is, let me explain. It's a notice that the district will send to a parent when they deny a service. In two months, I have received four prior written notices, and it's not because I have asked for services that are out of scope. One of the services I am asking for is an aide. Ironically, if this aide were approved, then we would be able to retain one of the employees that is possibly being laid off. I have been asking for an aide for two and a half years. What I'm pointing out is that the data showing that the aides are not necessary may not be accurate. And I'm not giving the parent who cannot obtain the services they need for their child. I can tell you story after story of special needs parents in this district that are fighting and not happy. Some are moving out or un-enrolling their children. There were 4,500 students enrolled in this district just three years ago. We are currently down to 3,853. When a district and a parent disagree on accommodations for their child, a parent is led with a few options. Most hire advocates paid by the hour or lawyers. Lawyers to advocate for a service that a child is entitled to by law. At DMUSD, we pay property taxes to go to fund our district. That's known as a basic aid district. Most school districts in San Diego are funded by student attendance. What's the difference? The difference is that if enrollment drops in other school districts, so does their funding. In our school district, if enrollment drops, the funding remains the same. The money that the district uses to sue special needs parents comes from the same money pool the parent paid into when they gave the property taxes. A parent is then either sued or is forced to sue to get the services that their child so desperately needs. The system is broken. Instead of hiring these lawyers, has anyone done a cost analysis to see how much more money would be saved by actually granting services? What is further concerning is principals can't utilize the funds for kids to include. I'm gonna skip. I also am here because I'm concerned about the teachers. I'm concerned about the teachers because they try so hard. They want to advocate for kids, and under condition of anonymity, I was told that they cannot. They fear retaliation. I'm here also speaking under my health.
Hello, who's that? Hello, my name is Lisa, and I'm the parent of two beautiful children here at DMUSD. My daughter is a neurotypical child, while my son has special needs. I have a unique perspective on how these two students are treated so differently. While DMUSD caters to neurotypical children to offer them access to a variety of programs and services to help in itself, my son is extremely limited as to what is offered to him. And even such, I have to hire an advocate attorney and legal person to be able to access services for him, like feeding therapies, help him eat, private speed inside group therapy, since he's on Rinkle, and proper occupational therapy to help him with his sense of needs. It's a battle at every meeting to get him any of these basic services. The district is proposing to only set staff positions that are absolutely needed. I have requested that my son have a one-to-one aide for the last several years, and have been told that the school doesn't have a philosophy of providing this to students. However, my son is in flight risk, and when he's helped one-on-one, he's better able to understand the task that's outside of that and progresses in his goals that are set out for him. I have seen this personally when he was home with me during the pandemic. These positions are necessary when the teachers are already juggling IEP meetings, goals, managing student behaviors, and without the help of enough aides, it becomes nearly impossible for them to help our children. Our special needs children will remain in this school district, and if you don't help them now, this issue will persist for their entire academic career here at DMUSD. I have seen how overworked the therapists, teachers, and aides are already, and have seen how this affects my child. Let's keep the staff we already have and do a better job of training them and helping them help our children. Subsequently, I requested complete budget breakdown of all special education allocated funds to be published for myself and the DMUSD community to be really aware of its location. Thank you.
Shimon Adams submitted for 2.1, but that is not in the path. That was at 4:45, so if you meant to submit for a different agenda item, then I'll take it. Okay, Esther, followed by Chelsea.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here tonight as a concerned parent. We are a district, as a district and a community, have a lot to be proud of. This pandemic has imposed hardships on many other school districts if we are approaching the end of a second successful academic year since 2020. Our children have continued to have options that no other school districts have had. And for that, we are very grateful to you for the hard work we know may need be put in. This past weekend, however, on the sidelines of my son's sports games, there was a lot of chatter about Mr. Swallow's departure. A parent who chose to leave the district from private school told me, "Don't you know that's what they do? They move people who don't agree them around." And we're encouraged to talk to parents from other schools, and many of us have. What we're hearing is that over the last few years, principals at Ocean Air, Ashley Falls, Sage Canyon, and now Delmar Heights have either been demoted or lived in the district or chose not to accept their renewal of other contract because doing so would mean leaving the schools they grow to love, all without a valid reason, at least not one shared with the community. How is it that in a district where teachers spent decades of their careers on the same campuses, we have so much turnover in the positions that serve as a link between each school and the district? And what is happening is we're seeing a special ed department. Teachers are leaving or being laid off and not being adequately replaced. This strains the remaining teachers, and it is unfair to our children. I recently saw a video from a church in which Dr. McCleod discusses the significance of seeing things through other people's eyes and its role in success. Let me tell you that through the eyes of the community, this looks really, really bad. We need to have an independent review of the message process in recent hiring, dismissal, and relocation of the teachers and staff that serve all of our schools. Our role as parents and the orders of the Board is to ensure that they are aligned with the standards we expect from such a prestigious district. I also support the request for a district-wide anonymous survey of our teachers. Their mental health is important, too. Two years ago, right around the same time, we were dealing with the sudden reality of having our children home 24/7. All across the world, people couldn't have enough praise on teachers. Yet what I have heard over the last few days is that our district perpetuates the culture of fear and leaves our teachers feeling like if they don't toe the line, they will be the next to go. We need to know what that line is. I came here today with the expectation that the Board is capable of providing clarity for all of these important issues. It pains me to say these things because I very much would not like to believe what I am hearing. I love our school. I love our community. I owe so much to my fourth graders, academia, and success to all of my teachers, and I want to know that those same teachers will be around to offer my kindergarten the same support. One of my favorite things about our school curriculum is that it incorporates positive mind growth, kindness, pledges of no hate, and an anti-bullying campaign that teaches kids how to identify a bully and have to stand up to them. I would hate for my voice to see those things as empty words because we build whole leadership that districts got accountable to those same standards.
Dear Members of the Board, I've emailed both Holly and Shelley about my disappointment with Mr. Swallow's abrupt departure and the lack of transparency from their office. Unfortunately, their vague correspondence put the community in a position where we were all asking, "What happened?" And everyone started talking. What began as a desire to find out what happened to Mr. Swallow turned into something so much bigger. We started asking other parents of other schools in this district about what has happened at their schools, and everyone seemed happy and relieved to finally shine a light on Holly's leadership style. It is one that is led by fear and intimidation. For the sake of being transparent, here's what the community is saying. Every single teacher in the district is afraid of Dr. McCleod and her staff. She can make your life a living hell. She is authoritative. She is an authoritative ruler, a dictator. There is this pervasive culture of intimidation that they have. When she gets an idea in her head, she goes full steam ahead. It doesn't matter if it works. Your district does not take feedback from their teachers, ever. They will ask for it, but teachers' answers are never honored. Teachers have stopped showing up to the event. Holly prefers optics over substance. I think they underestimated how much Jason Swallow is loved. What you are hearing is just the tip of the iceberg. She doesn't trust us to make decisions for our students. Holly definitely doesn't have our back. Dr. McCleod hates bad news. She ignores it. She also repeatedly, repeatedly ignores requests for help. No one thinks Mr. Swallow left because he wanted to. What they do is give the option to leave or be demoted, which some former principals have taken. Don't even get me started on special education, not very highly listed for sure. It created a constant culture of fear throughout the district. Throughout all of the pandemic, the underlying issue is teachers cannot voice actual opinions and concerns of school district decisions because those who do are usually let go at the end of the year under the guise of temporary contracts. If you don't drink Holly Kool-Aid, you're fired. I'm so glad someone is finally looking into this. Teachers have been upset for years, and no one cares. And Clerk isn't your problem. She's just a figurehead. Her staff is trying desperately to justify their massive salaries and build their resumes by implementing these new rules and nitpicking every little thing we do so they can point them later and say, "Look what we did." Mr. Swallow is probably the only principal left who is willing to stand up for his teachers and his students. She holds grudges. The list is obviously very long. Please don't use my name. I know it sounds like paranoia, but I don't want a target on my back. When you're a principal who knows who you know out your back, you can focus 100% attention on the student.
Thank you. That was awesome. On the floor, Anika Taylor, followed by Sarah Manchul.
Thank you, Board Members, for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm a parent, a concerned parent of the second grader and kindergarten at Heights. I've worked in a nature-related field for 20-plus years and matched staff throughout my career. The abruptly condescending announcement of Jason Swallow's departure raised my hair. I'm talking right now. The timing of the message was clearly foreign to tone in the opening paragraph of the Santa Ana HR protocols and was intentionally hurtful. Neither of these did anything to solve the blow that my children cried when I told them that Mr. Swallow, a constant source of positivity in the tumultuous sea of terrible things they've had to navigate in the last two years, would no longer be a presence in their lives. I'm here tonight because I lack confidence in the district leadership that initiated our principal's displacement and has inflicted unnecessary pain on our Delmar Heights school family. Since Thursday evening's announcement, I've spoken with various members of our community on campus, at event children's sporting events with parents of other schools, and just about anywhere in this very small community. People have told me all sorts of things about what they've experienced or heard about our district, some of which is obviously true and some of which is probably hyperbole. But transparency hasn't been a key stone in recent actions for district leadership, so I think that's kind of part of the course. In all that I've heard, two things were consistent. Parents believe major staffing decisions are being made with insufficient transparency or lack for consideration of our children. Teachers are working in a culture of intimidation, fear, and mistrust that is leading many to question whether they should remain a part of this district or to make the decision to leave the district. One told me yesterday that they couldn't speak to me about this because they were worried that they'd go next. Indeed, as a parent of a child on an IEP, I felt putting his need in assistance at grits by speaking here this evening for some fear of retaliation is in the realm of possibility. It's ridiculous. And it's beyond ridiculous that the district leadership takes time to create self-aggrandizing videos of little substance to run our happy little district to families, but the videos feel like they're designed to hide the district's dirty little secret. DMUSD is not a great place to be if you are a teacher or a staff member. Transparency with the public about major staffing decisions and a psychologically safe work environment for educators are a bare minimum standard. I'm here to ask you for an independent review of the work environment I am here to ask you for an independent review of the work environment created by district leadership and staffing decisions that have been made in the last four years. Our teachers and staff have been gagged, and we need to understand their perspective without them feeling they are risking their jobs and their lifelong careers. And this community deserves to know their taxpayer dollars are helping create a positive educational environment that supports our children and retains and attracts the best possible educators. To be clear, the Delmar Heights community is united by the rebuild of our school, and we're unified in the support of our beloved teachers and staff who nurture our children's learning and growth. We are a community who will not tolerate these essential community administrators being intimidated or having basic information of both of us. I again repeat that an independent review is needed to ensure that any unhealthy work culture that is being supported by this district be quick to an end to our community can be refreshed in our new school with a healthy work environment for our teachers so they can be the best possible educators for our children.
Thank you.
Get extra time, Sarah. Go.
We were all confused on Thursday night when we heard Mr. Swallow was leaving. If it were up to him, we know he wouldn't leave our children like that. Rumors floored, our kids were sad, and the teachers were literally speechless. Then rumors started to swirl, most devastating was the idea that the district may have a plan in place to break up our Delmar Heights family. The loss of Mr. Swallow was just one of the many gut punches our children were going to receive. So we started asking questions. Not everyone was answering. Dr. McClure gave us her strong non-answering reply, but I did get a reply. Not everyone did. Originally, I planned to come here to get real answers to our very real questions, questions the district has refused to give us and answers that impact so many lives. We've talked to current and former teachers from other district schools as well as parents all weekend to see if this involuntary transfer was something that we really needed to worry about. But what we've learned since then is so much worse than we imagined. We are so thankful to Dr. McClure and her staff for all the work they've put into building the school, as well as the school board, and if the general consensus of her prioritizing optics over substance is true, then they will certainly benefit from the new shiny showcase school they have planned just as much or more than our kids. Dr. McClure's made it a pattern of dismissing and rotating, in reality, uprooting teachers and administrators without improvement plans, without notice, or without any other reason than she felt we weren't, quote, "a good fit." Which in Mr. Swallow's case was absolutely contrary to what the students and the staff and the families, who again supposedly were her priority, feel. The combination of this habit and this overwhelming culture of intimidation and open distrust throughout the district have resulted in a terrible reputation for our district within the education community. DMUSD already has a reputation. One former teacher told me, "They call it the dirty little secret" because everyone wants to work here until they do. If our children and our staff are truly your priority, like you say they are repeatedly, then we need to hear those answers from you. Our kids need to hear they won't be uprooted again. I would respectfully request that the school board conduct an independent, anonymous district-wide survey among the faculties to find out how they truly feel about the leadership in order to see if Dr. McClure is a good fit for our district.
There remains all by Chris and the rest. So Sharon Franky is going to go on with that, and then Dylan Jones.
Well, I'm not going to be taking you out of the past hour long. You can pretty much come eat a meal. That's the patient that gives. I just have two quick questions. The first is, have I found any consent for my child to be used in the board's standard of thought promotion? And finally, I'm very concerned about the retention of regular self-care speed of our teachers with the hated departure of Mr. Swallow. And would the board consider an anonymous survey of teacher and staff to protect and hopefully prevent any pain points that we have had today? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Grummel, studying neuroscience at UCSD. I have two kids at the Heights. I've got Hans in fourth grade and Ryan in seventh grade. And to be honest, when I first heard the news about Jason leaving, I was kind of pissed. I was like, dude, continuity for our children. Please, let's usher them in. And then you start hearing finding out more information. And we've heard some nice discussion about those types of information, so I'm going to skip a little bit ahead in what I was hoping to talk about. So at UCSD, I sit on a lot of committees, including climate committees, diversity committees, where we deal with quite sensitive issues. And we had to deal with very sensitive topics and actually removal of tenure from faculty. So I've been in situations, I completely understand that HR information is not privy to the general public and that there are legal consequences for releasing such types of information. I've also been through and been part of solutions to these problems. And one of the solutions is getting an independent investigation that reports back to the board about the health of the district. This is common in these types of scenarios. UCSD does this regularly. This type of information can be used as a path forward to try to figure out how to fix problems if they exist in the district. It can be quite beneficial for all and help get everyone on the same track. The lack of transparency you can see here tonight is really bothersome to people, and we are concerned and we would like answers. Now, I understand that these answers can't be completely forthcoming about every little detail, but I also know that oftentimes you can lay out a framework within which how decisions are made. How are transfers decided? How is displacement? How are principals moving to new schools? Whatever reasons. Are there good reasons? Right? This is the type of information that can be made public without naming names. So please push for some transparency because you have a community really riled up. And our perception is that our teachers are operating in a culture of fear. And this is not healthy for our children and their brains as someone who looks at decision-making and stress. So please, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Franky, and I'm a Delmar Heights parent. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. In the past, I wasn't very active in my children's school community, but something changed during the pandemic. I was fortunate enough to find a wonderful pod for my son who was launching and at that time feeling very isolated. I realized that it truly takes a building. When we learned that state of the field was imposing the school rebuild, many parents in the Delmar Heights community worked hand-in-hand with the district to right a wrong. Just as we see the light at the end of the tunnel, we're dealt a blow of losing our principal, and now it feels as if that trust has been broken. We teach our children to speak up when they see injustices, and today I feel that I must do the same. Why would the glue that held our displaced school community together choose to leave when he was just last month, making plans on our return to Delmar Heights post-rebuild? To have Jason removed at this point has left us feeling bad. My two boys were devastated and confused. District leadership talks about our children being their highest priority, but these words bring hollow. Her actions demonstrate that despite a grueling two years in a unprecedented pandemic, remote learning for some families, a displacement of Delmar Heights students separated on two campuses, and an exhausting battle to rebuild our school, leadership continuity, and mental health and social well-being of our students, teachers, and staff are below our fortunes. If people are, but truly make Delmar Heights amazing, please do not let us lose that. Our teachers deserve a better work environment, which will in turn translate to a better learning environment for our children. I ask that the board hear our concerns and have us more involved when it comes to making large decisions, such as changing the head of our school. Many do not feel connected to the district, and I'm sure you want us to be. The first step is initiating an independent third-party review of teacher morale to gather facts through anonymous surveys. I hope there will be meaningful change so that our district is more transparent, compassionate, and tolerant. Thank you.
President Halberth, members of the board, Dr. Holly McClure. I am employee number 613673, a number that passed the document in February, which builds our. But I am not just a number. I am collateral damage of a erratic decision-making. My name is Dylan Jones. I am a mother of three amazing kids. I have a daughter going to NYU next year. I have twin boys, one of whom has special needs. I am a wife. I am a special educator. Before I became a special educator, I was a research librarian. My son was eight when he was identified by the special education team at Carl's Mac. I was so inspired by their knowledge, skills, compassion, and support that I changed career paths. I wanted to do that. Wanted to help kids. And here I am. I stand before you, not a number, but a teacher has a heart, emotions, a family, a friend, and the support of some of the best educators in the world. The teaching staff at CDM and in this district is unparalleled. They are collaborative, student-centered, engaged, empathetic, and smart. I have never been reprimanded, given an action plan, or told repeatedly that I need to improve a specific area of my teaching. I have never had my performance called into question during formal observations or criticized about my reports, data collection, management, instructional assistance, or that I needed to improve my relationship with students or families. On the contrary, I have been told my strengths are in my interpersonal skills, and interpersonal skills are the heart of special education. My students improve their lifestyle level by an average of 220 points in less than a year. That exceeds the yearly expected growth of 89 to 110 points for a typical student. On average, my students increased by two grade levels on their IFRD map and reading diagnostics from the beginning of the year till now. In fact, I had two students jump three grade levels. I have many successes. These are some of my measurable achievements. My number was brought to the board in February without my knowledge, no way to defend myself. It was shrouded in darkness. I didn't find out about my non-relect until March 7. It's important to inform you, the board, of how this was mishandled by our site principal. Between March 7th and March 11th, several incidents occurred that were unethical, not professional, and not best practice. I was told I would not be reelected because I was, quote-unquote, "I was not a good fit." I would like to ask the board, what does that mean? And why was my non-relect handled in this manner? This is my story. I'm not a number, and I am a good fit for Delmar. I would like you to reconsider the non-relect. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Shame on you.
... including me. President Halberth, members of the board, district, and board members in the community tonight. My name is Trisha Dixon. My parents are current sixth grader and future parent. I am so sad for Mr. Swallow, our teachers, and our kids. This is really a tremendous loss for us. And I feel there's so many rumors flying around, and they are on two sides of the story. I will definitely admit that, and both sides are really important. I wish we knew the truth online. His contract is not renewed because the details I've been told just don't add up to a reasonable position as principles. Jason was so beloved by our community and dressed in a all-around color with her self, and we're pleased. Over the past week or so, I've spoken to multiple teachers, parents, and even school board members. The floodgates have opened, and I'm honestly surprised by the majority of what I have heard. I'm a really involved parent at school, and I'm shocked that I didn't know some of this stuff was going on. At the core of all this, what needs immediate attention is that teacher morale across the district is exceptionally low. Our teachers have stated they feel extremely micromanaged by the district office and are fearful to speak up because of retribution. Hearing this pretty much broke my heart, regardless of those in the district office and how they feel about hearing this, what the case is. These are the feelings of our teachers. This is what they're expressing, and we can dismiss or disregard what they're going through. It pains me to hear this type of sentiment from the teachers who I do love dearly. During our entire rebuild process, we've reiterated the need to listen to our teachers. They know best. They're in the classroom, and no one is needed to educate our children, keep them safe, and make them feel loved. They're not looking to dictate or remove, but they need to feel that they are part of the conversation and that they are valued. I am truly a solution-based person. I don't bring up problems without at least bringing up one solution. We need to look at these problems and fix them. I don't think Mr. Swallow would come back even if the job was awkward to him. But I do feel strongly that this has brought forth an opportunity for us to move forward. And hopefully, the result of this situation will be an opportunity to look at the changes that we've implemented and reevaluate if we're moving in the right direction. And honestly, we just need to listen to our teachers right now and let them feel that they're part of this and things aren't just changing without them having this, you know... This is the last year I'm at the school, at least for a little while. Like three months left. Part of me was like, okay, there's not that much that I should be sending today. There's so many other parents that I'm sending for and effort. But I love these teachers, and it really hurts me that the way we change things or the people that are part of it to be part of that conversation, and they're not comfortable speaking out. And maybe this might need to have a task force of parents, teachers, district, people in the district coming together where no one feels that they're going to be totally accountable or not think that it's going to help them. And that's it. Thank you, guys.
Hello, President Halberth, members of the board, Dr. McClure administration. Thank you for listening to me tonight. I'm Anna West. I've been an involved parent in Delmar Heights school districts, specifically at Delmar Heights for over five and a half years now. It is apparent the community is responding to the district's latest decision to essentially fire our principal for the upcoming school year. While his sadness for Swallow was not able to finish out the year with us, I for one completely understand his need to move on and get a job in a new school since he was initially told about his contract stop in early June, just in February, and needed to plan for this future. While we can't change the past, I feel it's necessary to touch on this issue first as an example of how we do not want to see these types of decisions handled in the future. We need clear communication to why our principal, Jason Swallow, did not meet the ambiguous vision of the district. Without measurable, quantifiable reasons, we are left with a moving target rationale that can be used on the whim against any position, making DMUSD nothing more than a dictatorship acting as democracy. The community cannot support his behavior financially, electorally, or in any way, and we will not relinquish oversight for our children's education and the schools' tax dollars support. That said, moving forward together will benefit us all. So how do we move forward? How do we achieve confidence our district is in line with what we, the constituents, desire, not the other way around? Let's start by finding some common ground. I believe we can all agree that priority at Delmar Heights is to ensure our children are provided with a kind of instruction and leadership that is rooted in tried and true teaching methodologies, focusing on the development of our children's love and learning and personal character first and foremost. You will notice I did not mention testing and technology in these priorities. Cookie cutter curriculum is not quality education. That is lazy education directed by those who do not understand the art and the calling of teaching. At Delmar Heights, we trust our strong team of highly experienced teachers to know how to do their jobs because over many, many years and hundreds of students that have grown under their tutelage, they have earned that respect. The goal in any field is to hire those who lead in their role, not be managed in that role. I believe this is especially true in teaching, and currently, it seems it is the other way around for the DMUSD teachers and staff. The teachers are subject to routine walkthroughs where they are feared of being judged and retaliated against rather than with the joy of collaboration. The joy of learning is a foundation of which a pursuit of education exists and stems from our teachers and is passed upon to our students. We have fallen too far from this ideal. Dr. Brad Johnson, a renowned educational and leadership author, said, "Excessive testing doesn't improve learning, but rather gets in the way of it." So why does our district origin a fifteen cent thank you? Push our teachers to prioritize the raising of testing scores for our schools even further. What is the motive? Will it make our children smarter, kinder, better learners? Are there any benefits to the community itself or our school to register higher test scores than it already does? than it already does? The answer is a reality, no. Thank you. Oh, thank you. There's so much more.
Hello, members of the board and community. My name is Jesse Barrick. I want to start off by saying that we've been really grateful what this district has done in regards to keeping our schools open, but with everything that has happened with the pandemic, we appreciate all the hard work and foresight. We are also very thankful for all the hard work that has gone in for Delmar Heights rebuild. We're excited for it to be completed. During this tumultuous time, it is nice to have some elements that are consistent, and Jason Swallow has been one of those consistent elements. He was well-liked by students, parents, and teachers. I know that it is difficult to govern and it is difficult to lead, and know that you can't release all the people all the time. I know that you probably can't comment on HR issues, but there better be a good reason to get rid of a well-liked principal. Obviously, Holly is tasked with making that decision. I think that the other thing that makes this difficult is the email that we received. I do not have direct knowledge, but a lot of what we've been hearing leads us to believe that the email as written was at worst a lie and at best, very bad messaging. Holly, there are some people here that are going to be angry at you no matter what, but there are some people who appreciate many of the things that you have done that stand to lose some trust based on how this has been handled. What can you do to rebuild trust with people who have questions about this? One possible solution might be to acknowledge that you made one or more mistakes in how you handled this. Please let us know if there's anything different. Please let us know if you would do anything different, or if there's anything else you can do to keep and/or regain trust with us. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to move on to this work and then respond to Dr. McClellan. Okay, you're at item five. Board's suggestion is to sit here. Five point one is more recognition DMUSD employees. Good evening again. Please join me in congratulating these DMUSD classified employees for the month, for the months of March. Michael Navarro from Ashley Falls, an instructional aide. Barbara Martinez and Jose Azbarz, a night custodian at Delmar. Chris Ray, camp manager, Delmar Heights. Becky Young, health secretary at Delmar Hills. Jennifer Hill, library technical student at school. Tanner Gibson, instructional aide, St. Anthony's School. Lisa House, assistant assistant, St. Morish. Julie Woods, lead teacher in our social and inclusion preschool at Torrey Hills. Jojo Holt, assistant teacher in our ECPC. And Rappel Dixon, human reserve technician in our district office. These employees do wonderful work on behalf of our children throughout the entire district. Please join me in this step in congratulating these great DMUSD employees for the months. If I point you to the board of Delmar Heights Education, DMUSD president.
President Halber, members of the board. This evening, I actually have a pass on having you stay tonight. But Ashley Falls High School was going to be presenting tonight over our sixth grader team, who worked great on their project, our sixth grader team. So instead of having the privilege of introducing our principal, Charlie McClellan, she's going to tell you a little bit about their project, and then maybe a video.
President Halber, board of trustees, Dr. McClellan, cabinet. I am the cross-principal, Ashley Falls, and you are going to have the opportunity to review a video of our sixth graders and our most recent website case in project. So I'm not going to explain too much because it's all about the kids, so I'm going to Glad that they have a presentation behind them, but just to greet them. And they did such a good job. They tried so hard, and I was interviewed for it as well. But they've already started on a smaller scale in their garden. They do have a compost. They're going to take it school-wide. Other rain barrels, they'd like to take school-wide. I thought it was all good. And then the last thing was, I'm going to consult with them on how they would like the courtyard to look when we look at redesigning it this summer. So they did a great job. Thank you very much. I'll be sure.
Thank you. That was really fun. Okay, so next we have five point three, board report, DMUSD, Delmar School with Patriot Foundation, DMSEF.
Thank you. Good evening, President Halber, members of the board, Dr. McClellan, members of the cabinet. That was nice to see because that's our son's class and grade, and yeah, and they are at camp this week, so I'm missing them, especially my son. So it was nice to see them on the screen, and they did a great job. I just have a few updates, but we do have a lot of nice things coming up for the community with STEAM Plus. We have our STEAM Plus Invitational next Tuesday, March 22nd. You can still submit a Google form if you do want to attend, and we're excited to hear from our community about what, you know, priorities are, what things they love about our STEAM Plus program, things that the, you know, people want to do in the future, and also just to share what our STEAM Plus program looks like right now. And then we have STEAM Plus families coming up at every school, which is very exciting. We didn't know if we'd be able to have those this year. So we're thrilled to have those, and we'll have them at every school in the next six weeks or so. And we just have more good news to demonstrate our incredible generosity of our community. We've averaged $1.3 million raised as of March 15th, which is the most we've raised by this time ever. And as you can see, we have many companies that are also supporting through employee matching dollars, which we are so grateful for. And the average game to map has been about $600. So again, we're so grateful to our families. And with the funds raised thus far, we can fund 10 full-time STEAM Plus teachers. So we're thrilled about that. We're super grateful. We're very excited for the next school year with our STEAM Plus program. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Five point four, board report, Delmar Parentage Association, MTA, with Delmar Heights PT president. So five point five is board report, board members. And to start with, number one.
To be sure, we all have the down looking at yesterday. So good, good to see Delmar Heights finally take off and open the school. I'd like to, I've been looking up at the end, but I'd also like to see getting the site, school site visits back on the calendar. I've been thinking about it for two years since I was in those schools, so I really want to see that, that, but we have. And my lab is going to be at SS squared, the organ for the parents, SS squared finance discussion tomorrow. And we've been trying to get some transitional, you know, trying to get Sacramento to fund transitional kindergarten if they're going to require it for us. I mean, that's been a big, big issue. Special aid dollars again, another, another big issue, but these are things that are like, we're going to be discussing. I know we've all been trying to talk to legislators about getting TPA funding for basic A schools, because it will take dollars away from the general head if they don't fund it. So it's been on our top of our list for lobbying efforts up there in September.
I chair the North City West Facility Finance Board, which is the group that monitors the bonds that were issued way back when. And basically, we're overseeing simply tax money being paid to pay back those funds. But we have been active and we're able to get our district a certain money, a certain amount of money back, and we're getting those payments every year at this point, I think for the next year or two, in the amount of about $250,000 in a year. So it's a good thing. I also was able to visit Pacific Sky, and I had a walkthrough with the contractors. I had to wear hard hat and all that stuff. It is amazing for those Delmar Hills or Delmar Heights parents and Delmar Hills parents that are here. You're in for a treat when your school gets built, because looking at what can be done using today's thinking in terms of education and what the school is going to, let's just say, everybody's going to be very happy with the, what they got down there in the city of Delmar's ranch, and just see what's going to happen up here. Speaking of that, I was sad to attend a virtual hearing in court with the judge where the Safe the Field people are trying another tack at stopping the construction of Delmar Heights. I was happily here that the judge passed on ruling on that injunction for a couple of weeks, and it did me a lot of good on that very same day to attend the groundbreaking at Delmar Heights. So I'm optimistic, but it seemed clear that the Safe the Field people are trying to relitigate exactly what they just litigated in another lawsuit that they brought. And that's my report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for your comments. I always appreciate hearing feedback. I, it helps me take, take our ideas a little more on. So in that sense, also, I was at the, you know, the Aon for the DMSEF this month. It was fun seeing ED in action again. You guys do a run of wonderful meeting. I'm always very happy to see the amount of volunteers that are there that spend a lot of their own time to help raise money for the district and get a robust STEAM program. That's also one of the messages that I received as well, is that they do a really hard job doing that, and they'd like to see a really strong robust STEAM program in the future. So hopefully, they're on the path, and they want to see that the board is a good program. And in that sense, I would also encourage everyone to attend the STEAM Plus invitation that we talked about, so they can see what's going on and their ideas, please share them. And that's, this is how we learn and we do better. I was also attended an equity training with some board members at Solana Beach and their superintendent. And it's, I attended one before last week. I didn't really share about it. I didn't have time to at that time, but it's, I think these trainings are wonderful. It's really basically an opportunity for us to kind of tell our own stories, learn from other people. And I think one of the messages really that you get from it is just, you learn to be empathetic, learn to be curious, intellectually curious about other people, and hear about their experience. And the last thing I was sure of you guys was that I was at the San Diego County CSPA meeting, and there's a de-escalation training. I think Holly may have passed that information out to you guys already. It happens to be on our budget workshop next week, so I think it's going to be useful. It's put on by the city attorney's office and also the National Conflict Prevention Center, just to talk about how to deal with the de-escalation situations and support a productive, public meeting. So it's kind of trying to have the responsibility of doing the work, and see the responsibility that you do, and also the public's first interest. That is, thank you.
Thank you. I also went to the Pacific Sky site visit, and it's really amazing. It's just, you know, beautiful spaces for kids to learn, and the configuration of the classrooms and the adjacent space and the outdoor space, and it's all right there, super flexible. I think it will get teachers a lot of room for creativity in how they manage their space and play, to learn from instruction, and, you know, I really do like it. I love our school.
It's not just the beautiful space, it's the usefulness.
It's like, you can move all around and, you know, inside out.
Because when we used to do the site visits, I used to be taken by the fact that kids are comfortable sitting in a laundry unit for reading books.
Yes. And there are like little nooks where they, that are built into the walls, so the kids can like go in the nook and little bench, little... So really, really happy for that school to be built and to be the new part of that community and, you know, really worthy of that community. So also, still be excited to go to the Delmar Heights School groundbreaking yesterday. It was near and dear to my heart, and personally, it's been a long road for me working on that school since before I was on the board. So it was, it was an exciting moment, and despite the NWS attempts to stop the school that continued even that very day, the, thank you to the team, the district's team, President Holly, and all of you who have diligently worked to push the school forward against all odds. So that is my report. Five point six is Mr. McClellan.
Good evening. It is, yes, as Board Member Wood brought up, we are heavily advocating for funding for universal transitional kindergarten, because right now, we aren't eligible to receive funding, and we're hoping that that is added into the budget for California into legislation so that we are eligible to receive funding and can, can look into providing that program, because as of right now, we don't. ED brought up sixth grade camp. Yes, it's the first time in two years that our children, the last two years, they did not go, so actually, the first in three years, that our children in sixth grade have been able to go to camp. Huge gratitude to the teachers who go to camp with them, instructional assistants, et cetera, because that, we're not with our children this week, but they are. And so they are truly wonderful, and we appreciate everything that they're doing for and with our kids up there, and it's a great experience. They send pictures all day long, and it really is a wonderful outdoor education experience. We're glad that they get to partake in that. We also, yes, had the Delmar Heights groundbreaking last year. It was wonderful to see that step in the process, and it has been, as we know, a lot of hard work on the part of a lot of people to get to this point, and a lot of love for the community. I know how much the community loves the school and can hardly wait to have the entire community back together again. We had a chance to meet with the Delmar Heights staff together today, all in the same room. It was wonderful. And unfortunately, they don't have a lot of chances to be all together right now. They deserve that. I can hardly wait until about a year from now, when we will be moving them back into Delmar Heights, and they're a brand-new school, and they will again be all together. They have been wonderful through all of this, and so too has the team at Ocean Air at Delmar Hills, and of course, it's all for the benefit of our children and making sure that everybody has them front and center. It has never been an issue, because they all do, and it's wonderful to see that. And we also have exciting things happening all spread, which, you know, a meeting with the KTA presidents a couple of weeks ago, we heard about those things. Several of them have been mentioned tonight, just as district live. And the STEAM Plus invitation coming up, yes, we do encourage people to come. I think we will have a lot of participation. It's going to be great. Open houses are happening at every school site. They will be in person, which is wonderful. Every school site will be having STEAM Plus nights that are also in person, so we're excited about those. We have kindergarten information nights around the corner, or events around the corner, and we already had one parent information night for the new Pacific Sky school. That was yesterday. It was wonderful. There was a room full of parents interested in here to attend that school, and we have another one coming up on March 30th for that school. So we're excited about that. And I, I did want to mention a couple of things and address a couple of topics that have come up regarding the Delmar Heights staff. I talked about the Delmar Heights staff a moment ago. I do want to ensure the board and the staff, of course, that there has never been and there will not be a plan to dislaze the teachers at Delmar Heights. That school staff exists and is a staff just like the school staff at any one of our other seven schools. So as soon as we actually have that school built, we will be able to move that staff back into the building, and that will be exciting. So that's wonderful. Also, wanted to address a couple of things made about, or comments about a video. I just, I want it very clear that I did not have anything to do with making the video, directing a video, creating a video, either to the staff. So I would appreciate if the record be set straight on that. That is not true. I also want to talk about the principal selection appointment. The principal selection of a school... The principal selection of a school always is dependent on the situation and the situation at a given time. And the current opening that we had already been interviewing for in the district was an opening and we had been interviewing and selecting a principal, which we were very thrilled to have selected. And that is a wonderful position to be in when you suddenly had another opening occur. So it makes sense that in that instance, when we have an opening and a wonderful person coming forward, that then we can fill that opening. And in just a moment, I will have you meet her and I'm thrilled to do that. But beforehand, Ryan, would you please address, because there have been questions about personnel, and would you please address from a district standpoint what a district is allowed to or not allowed to address in general in personnel issues, please?
Yes, so when it comes to educationally or employment related matters, just the vast majority of those decisions are confidential and just as a district, we are actually prohibited from being able to disclose publicly any reasons that exist behind our personnel decisions. And so that's just with that said, we're also very sensitive that when we do make personal decisions that we're always very mindful of our community, of continuity for our students, for our staff, for our greater community.
Thank you. I do want to speak, I know I can speak up, we have our entire team, that we love this district and we do, we put our heart and soul into doing what's best and right for children in this district every single day. And I'm very grateful to the most incredible people, people that I've worked with and extreme amounts of gratitude to the entire team, every teacher that I'm fortunate to work with who does that every single day. It's a wonderful place to be. So I do, I do, I do think it's important to take a moment out and think about how grateful we all need to be about working here, being here and being a chance to be a part of children's lives in a way that truly is quite an awesome opportunity to be able to impact, whether it's through new school buildings that we've all worked really hard to design or actual, you know, making sure that those things exist everywhere in the school, not just at a new school building. That's what we all do. So every day, a lot of people, hundreds of people around this district are doing just that. And without further ado, we're excited now to introduce you to Jenny Pearson, who is going to be our newest principal. Ryan, would you please do the honors and introduce Jenny, please?
Get this a little lighter or crunch. I have quite a lot to have to meet you again as far as what works best. So it is my pleasure and my honor to be able to introduce this Jenny Pearson to you. Jenny is coming to us from Vista where she was a principal and assistant principal, an instructional coach where she supported staff along the lines of personalized learning and assessment. She was a Vista provider supporting new staff. And so I think in addition, not only to just her experiences and the way that she's been able to support her staff, her students, her community, what's been really amazing about this process is we've gone through the checking references and talking to other people who know her and work with her to be able to see that not only does she have this technical knowledge and skills, but at the heart of who Jenny is, knowing that what comes through, I'm clear for everybody that we'll talk to about Jenny is that she's someone who loves kids and supports teachers and builds community. And I'm just really excited to be able to see what Jenny is going to be able to bring to support the staff, the students and most importantly, the kids and community of Delmar Heights. I was over at Delmar Hills the other day, just walking around and as I was walking through, a member of the staff called me and said, we know so and so with one of our parents, their husband is a teacher in Vista and they told us, we can't believe you'll even be able to get Jenny and she's going to be so wonderful for us. And so we were really excited to go along with Jenny too, our district.
Thank you so much. Good evening, members of the board, parents and community partners. It's an honor to be here with you today. I'm so excited to get to know the students and the parents and the staff at Delmar Heights. I was fortunate to meet most of the teachers there today and they are such an exceptional group of educators and I'm so honored to be joining such a great team. I want to thank you in advance for the opportunity to serve such an outstanding community. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are at, here at the Board for writing agenda items, I hope you have the agenda item coming. Five point eight is the board approval minutes for the February 16, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Six point one to six point one six is consent items. Are there any questions? How to consent?
I just had a, I had one. On six point seven, I think that's good. So I just wanted to ask me to tell us more about the oral music school program.
Yeah, please tell us, Kelly.
See you.
That you will not welcome today. Yes, we, one of the content areas within STEAM plus that has been very challenging for us to hire for has been in the field of music. General education, music teachers are tough to come by. And so within the interim, we have looked to the Center for Oral Music to be able to bring a music experience to our students who have at schools where we've actually lost a music teacher this year. And so this is supplemental to our STEAM plus music program. And however, we do have history with them in the district. They have been at schools before, have a variety of programs and experiences for our students and we're very excited to be able to bring them. And we will look to next year as well. We are trying to hire for two music teachers, fingers crossed. We're searching far and wide. And though if we are not, we will supplement our music programs at schools with the Center for Oral Music.
This program was at Delmar Heights. I don't know if those of you who are from Delmar Heights remember this, but it's really amazing because they bring musicians from all over San Diego who are hail from around the world and they have just an incredible array of musical backgrounds, whatever, like we're still in drummers and just so many different areas and it's the kids learn to do performances. And so it's supplemental to obviously if you can have a full-time music teacher and that's what we want, but even in addition, this is a great musical exposure kind of opportunity for the kids. So I was so happy that's what happened when it came to Delmar Heights at times because there was not a difficulty in funding for music musicians. So they do a great job, well, the children did a great job at this point, the two schools were there.
So it sounds like a supplemental town, maybe it's something that could be incorporated for in the longer term. But it sounds like there's really interesting children that I'd love to see more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question, five to ten? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
What's the paper?
Aye.
Consent agenda passes. We are at eight point one appointment at the Citizens Oversight Committee.
Good evening, Governor, President Palper, members of the board, Dr. McClure. This evening, we are bringing a proposed appointment for a member of our Citizens Oversight Committee. We had a member who was one of our parents reps, was moved out of that community and had to resign at the right round of the year. And so as that happened, we went out and recruiting and application process and then we did have an applicant and interviewed recently. And we are very happy to bring Sarah Lake, who is a parent at Seymour Ridge and is an active member of PTA and therefore satisfies that role, but also has been very active throughout the measuring and campaign and is knowledgeable of the program and will be a wonderful addition to the Citizens Oversight Committee.
Okay, thanks. And this is an action item, I assume, or is it? Yes. Okay, sorry. Okay, so we need a motion to appoint Sarah Asara.
Yeah, I just want to say I worked with Sarah on the, at the first game for him and so she's wonderful and I think that gave me a wonderful addition. I happily will take motion to add Sarah on the Citizens Oversight Committee.
I'll second. I was on the interview today and perfectly satisfied with it as well, so I'll second the motion. I'll trust you guys.
Alligator?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Six point nine is a board report facilities update. Say a aye. Nine point one.
My video, so I had to switch mine on, which is a bit weird. Thank you again, Mr. Palper, members of the board, Dr. McClure. This evening, I will provide my facilities updates and we'll cover our Delmar Hills Academy modernization at the Sky School and our Delmar Heights School. So starting with the Delmar Hills Academy modernization, while I don't have a lot to share and change with the board, I can say that we continue to work with Lionel because we actually met today. We are moving to the schematic design phase where we are fleshing out the design in order to be able to move to a cost estimate. We're doing some of the background work with our geotech and survey. And so some of that background work will lead to a next step, which would be bringing schematic design and then looking at moving forward with an RFP to add ABC spec contractor because with a modernization like this, we'll need them on a little bit earlier as we start looking at phasing and other ways and thinking about how we might do the construction. If we do it in a summer or we do multiple summers, those kind of pieces will be really important to have them on. So you will see that before the end of the school year, I would expect. And we hope also to have some more information on the schematic designs we get towards the end of the school year and bring some more visuals and information on that. With the Sky School, construction is ongoing. We continue to have an anticipated start date for August 15th, 2023. We continue to note the anticipated full site completion in January of 2023, but I would anticipate that before then I will be able to get that question done. And we're really working that team's working to move as quickly as they can and to have as much of it done by August 15th. When we look at just an update this month, we are seeing the front of the school really start to come together. So that glass in entry, it looks beautiful. It also provides a wonderful view for our front office staff all the way up the lane as we have our drop off. And so from an observational security standpoint, really fantastic. If we look over here, this is just the fun. I got to see them, they shit this thing up and just dump all of these boulders in, putting boulders in. They have some of a natural landscape seating areas outside of your classroom. And if you look next to it, here are some of the logs and they're actually boulders. These boulders and logs are being put in place and then the concrete being poured around them so they will be super sturdy. But there also leads to areas so that when our kids are outside, they have natural seating and then we'll be putting in furniture on top of it so it's kind of creating a space for them for outdoor learning. And then in the back, we are starting to see the shade structures in the back of the multi-purpose, the multi-use area come together. Those are being framed out with the structural steel and then we'll be starting to begin to wood elements that go across the top and that's really starting to come together. And even from last week to last two weeks, as we have worked with there, the grading on kindergarten area is starting to become, come more in place. And so every, every week when I go out there, there is more work and it seems hard to believe because it just keeps going so quickly. They're doing a fantastic job. And I do have, they flew an aerial view, so we have an aerial view of the site, just to give kind of a big picture from the sky. Those white things will be skylights that are going to create a lot of natural light in each area. That big area is our innovation center, multi-use space. And then down to the, the little pockets that you see there at the end are these kind of patio areas that will be in between our STEAM plus area. So we can have outdoor and indoor and connection. And then to the right is our kindergarten. So they're making great progress. I think that we will be done with all of the moving in the multi-use area within the next two weeks and they're starting to move toward the solar, which will be sort of in this area around here. And as I've said, we were able to have a number of folks come on tours. That solar combined with all of that natural light, I think we're going to be really, really low on energy costs as well. So we're excited to get open fantastic in the educational program and also the design and ability to make it a cost effective school to run, which is wonderful. And then on to the Delmar Heights School rebuild. As we shared construction, we started demolition on March 7th. Fantastic movement on that. I'll share some pictures of that in a moment. The formal groundbreaking was just yesterday and was a wonderful event. We have an accelerated timeline of 14 months and for comparison, Pacific Sky is on 15-month timeline and that is moving pretty quickly. And so all four of EDI knew that this would need to be accelerated timeline from the beginning, so they committed from the beginning, but that also means that we can get our students in in May of 2023 before next school year ends. And that's, that's something we're really dedicated and working for. As a couple of board members brought up, there is another round of litigation that's been brought. This is first to the city of San Diego, but we are what's called the real party of interest because it's really about our performance to be able to move forward. There was a hearing scheduled for a temporary restraining order yesterday on the day of the groundbreaking that seemed to potentially be scheduled that was not ordered by the court and will be going back on April 1st for an injunction hearing. And we continue to work very hard to fight that and we're collaborating with the city to stop this round of litigation as well as we continue to forward and working on this project. And then the demolition, I have to say, the, I mean, April 1st, when that hearing is, is actually two years to the day from our first planning meeting when we started planning for this school. And it is, it is wonderful with all the hard work that so many put in to see the demolition taking place. And the season of these portals start coming down and then be completely down. It's been wonderful. That team is working really hard to move quickly. The groundbreaking was fantastic. It was great. I didn't have a great picture, but I'm going to show you a video that will have some of the kids in it. But these shovels here, if you weren't there, we were able to do the formal thing with the adults, but the fun thing was having the kids get out there and all the kids who wanted to, you guys go up and have their own shovel and do their own little digging in the dirt. And then I don't think many knew, but we had it scheduled so that that excavator in the background wasn't just an ornamental piece. And so this is how we kind of finished off. I kind of gave a look over about a minute after this. I'm not showing you the whole thing and I think this guy would have taken out the whole building. But we kind of moved on to the cupcakes and the rest of it. But it was, it was a wonderful afternoon and it was fantastic. I have so many people out there and so we, I just want to thank the board and all the support up to this point, Dr. McClure, our community, because we've had great support throughout to get to this day and it was, it was very fulfilling to be able to have a playground meeting this day. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, obviously.
I have a comment, just thank you for all this. It's an amazing amount of facilities projects we're doing concurrently and I know that none of them are easy ones, especially the Heights project with all the litigation. So thank you for your diligence and pushing forward on this.
Yeah, I just want to echo Eric's comment. They have the BE, as if the Sky, they also, the tarp came down. So the tarp has been there just for the whole entire period. This blue tarp that's been around to wrap around the fence and so no one can really see what's behind. And so now the community actually is able to kind of see the buildings a lot better and I'm telling you that everyone is so excited. They're, they're like all little kids jumping up and down, but as a build, so they're very excited. So I really hope that Delmar Heights will be able to kind of be moving forward. I'm really disappointed. Last month, I reshared my outrage. I'm not going to do it there again, but I just really, you know, please stop, you know, whoever's behind all these things. I really wish they would stop and it's, it's not really getting anywhere and, you know, who else is going to sue postal officials? I'm not trying to give you any ideas, but I mean, like, you know, where are you going next? So please, just, it's not changing anything. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Ten point one is the board review approval of the 2021, 22 second term budget report. Say a aye. Now the citizens from the business services and Markon for term finance to present the budget.
Yes, thank you again, President, Upper Members of the Board, and Dr. McClurgan. I am still Chris Stone, yes, this is the assistant.
My taped house.
I am joined by Mark, our Director of Finance, tonight. And we will be presenting IAM and requesting approval for our second interim budget. And so tonight, in our presentation, we will go over the first interim versus the second interim, and look at revenue and expenditure variances. We'll talk about our general fund summary, and we'll look at a multi-year projection, and then talk a little bit about looking ahead. So I'm going to ask Mark to look at our first interim versus second.
Good evening, everyone. When we look at our first interim versus second interim, we'll be reviewing our revenue and expenditure variances. And on the revenue side, at first interim, we were at a total revenue of sixty-eight point two million. We have budget adjustments of just under two point one million. And that leaves us at a second interim of seventy point three million. When we look at our revenue variances, the major variance comes from the other state revenue, which we increased for three new state programs. The first one being the largest one, which is the educator effectiveness block grant. We are receiving one-time funds to be spent over five years. And this is the one where the board approved an expenditure plan at the December fifteenth board meeting that we're spending over five years. The second one is the expanded learning opportunities program, which is to encourage unduplicated pupils, which are English learners, low-income and foster youth students to participate in after-school programs. And then finally, the third one is for early intervention preschool grant for at-risk students that were preschool age to provide intervention services to them. And then finally, we also budget the local revenue, our assigned donations when they are received. So there's a slight increase to the revenue for that. On the expenditure side, when we look at first interim, we're at just over sixty-seven million in expenditures. We have budget adjustments of seven hundred fifty-one thousand. And second interim, we're at sixty-seven point eight million. When we look at all of our salary and employee benefits, we adjusted the budget based on our actual expenditures through January thirty-first. We added books and supplies and our operating expenses. The operating expenses is where our services hit the budget. And this is where we budgeted for the expanded learning opportunities program and the early intervention grant. And then finally, we also had a reduction in our capital outlay as we're planning for our child nutrition program and the universal meals next year. We decided that we only need to buy one new truck, and we can utilize an existing one. So when we look at our ending fund balances, we're at seventeen point eight million beginning at the, at the beginning of the year. We have a net increase to the fund balance of two point four million, and we have a net ending fund balance of twenty point three million. Now, a majority, sorry, not a majority, but about ten percent of that twenty million, two, two million is in restricted funds, and that's related to the educator effectiveness block grant, which we're spending over multiple years. So part of that net increase, that two point four, about one point one of that is restricted funds. We see that increase of two million dollars in the restricted funds. So at the end of this year, we anticipate having a unrestricted fund balance of twenty-six point nine percent.
So now we'll take a look at our general fund summary. And as we look at the general fund revenue summary, you'll see that the bulk of our revenue is the LCFF resources, and this is mostly our property taxes. We also realize revenue from our Delmar Schools Education Foundation, and we have one-time funds from both state and federal programs, as Mark mentioned. So a total revenue from, and other financing sources of seventy point two million. I'll also note those one-time funds, one-time funds from both state and federal on there and our Sturz-on-the-Half contribution that we make each year. As we look at the expenditure summary, we are people business, and so you'll see that total salary and benefits accounts for eighty-three point five percent of our program. As always, the Sturz-on-the-Half is included. And when we look at our total expenditures and other alcohol, we end up at just about sixty-seven point eight million dollars. And then as we look out to a multi-year projection, we are carrying forward really the same projections that we brought to you at first interim. So we are looking at three point two five percent increase in property tax over twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. Our average daily attendance is projected to be fairly flat at a little over thirty-nine hundred and then a little closer to four thousand over the next two years. We do our second column of two percent increase in annual, and then we have our annual adjustments in employer, a cost for Sturz and Furs, those contributions. Looking specifically to the multi-year projection, as we look at, we are currently at seventy point two million dollars in revenues. And as we look to our first projected out year twenty-two, twenty-three, you'll see that that total revenue does go down. And this comes from reduction in the federal revenues that we're receiving. So we're down to sixty-eight point nine million, and then it goes back up in the third year as we continue to see the progressive increase in our property taxes at seventy point eight million dollars. And then as we look at our expenditures, we're currently at sixty-seven point eight million, moving to sixty-eight point seven million, and then up to just under seventy million dollars in our fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And then as we look at, we have a couple of other highlights that you may not have had in our first interim as we're looking at this, because as Mark mentioned, when we're looking at our multi-year projection and we look at our ending fund balance, we do have a, what we'll see on that top line, a net increase that is pretty large in the first year. So it's two point, almost two point five million dollars. And then you'll notice that the net increase is only a hundred ninety-nine thousand in twenty-two, twenty-three, and then eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four. And then we've highlighted in sort of that orangish tan color, the restricted funds, because that's where we're seeing some, some differential. And so those restricted funds, as Mark said, are coming in with a larger amount of money that we're then spending over time. So they're staying in our reserve until they're spent. So it scoops it a little bit in that from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three, you'll see that we're spending that down by approximately seven hundred thousand dollars and then by another five hundred thousand dollars. So if you look at the second to bottom line on the total unrestricted fund balance, that really pulls out that restricted and gives you a truer idea of what our ending fund balance of our unrestricted funds are. And so if you look at the eighteen point two to nineteen point one million, you see that the actual unrestricted increase in our general fund reserve is over nine hundred thousand, is approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. And then from twenty-two, twenty-three, you're seeing that go at about one point three million. And that's why you'll see that the unrestricted reserve percentage continues to go up at a traditional clip there of twenty-six point nine to twenty-seven point eight to twenty-nine point two. So I just wanted to highlight that, that kind of variance that that restricted pulls in and try to pull that out for, for the board. And then as we look ahead, we continue, as always, to look at enrollment projections and staffing needs. That's even more of, it's just more of a project this year as we're looking to opening a new school. And so we've been working on that, working with data demographics on updating enrollment projections. We've sent out a form to get input from families as to who have their attendance at Pacific Sky School, that Brian Stanley, Jimmy Hug, have been working together as we look at that enrollment projection staffing. We continue to monitor our Sturz and Furs annual adjustments. We are giving towards the end of what was, doesn't seem that long ago, where there are those increases that are going over time, but it doesn't mean they're, we don't know what the future holds as well. So we are monitoring that. We do have a social science curriculum adoption that is on the horizon, and so we are reserving money for that. And then we have new programs being implemented from the twenty-one, twenty-two budget act. We touched on these, the educator effectiveness block grants, the expanded learning opportunities program, or the intervention preschool. And then something that we've spoken to before, and we will be speaking to more in our budget workshop, our universal meals implementation. And we've been working diligently and having regular meetings, Mark, myself, Tiana Barton, and our business services team, in looking at not only the implementation of the program when the kitchen opens, but how we ensure that we have a strong program to start the school year. So another big thing that we'll look for as we look into next year. And with that, we would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Just to clarify, just to clarify, that the lunch and breakfast is included in the budget projections or costs?
Yes.
Chris, is the, the, the unrestricted reserve seems to be increasing? And I know you kind of touched on this a little bit. Is that due to our continued increase in property tax revenue?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other? Are there any kind of concerns that that might top out at some point? Like the, or there's a continued, is that a continued increase or?
Well, we're projecting, we would expect to see that we've sort of flattened to that three and a quarter percent. So that seems to be where we're planning out on right now. It's always something to be monitored. And it also, as you have less new developments, it will have an flow with the amounts of turnover that you have with homes. And then there's the, the small percentages that can be added each year by the tax accessory we can do to not change ownership.
Yeah, I have part of it, because like in our area, the kind of developments are already kind of stalled out at this point. And I think there's a little bit more of this.
Right, I think that you remember a few years ago, when we were having all the growth, we had about seven percent increase in property tax. And so now we're kind of hitting our more normal turnover and, you know.
And then, yeah, I just want to follow up these. So all of the meals, and you have already kind of considered that in, in planning the next year. So that, that seems like it was in the past when you were talking about it. It was like potentially a million dollar contribution that we might have to make. So those are things that are considered into the budget already, or?
So we do have, right now, only a hundred thousand dollar contribution anticipated, but from the current program. And so I think if it's going to cost more than that, then we also have that Fund Seventeen reserve that we have been putting aside for Pacific Sky School, and we can pull from there also to help us during that bridge period. I think the expensive part will probably be during that bridge period, because we may have to either rent a kitchen or vend meals. So that's the part that we're working on right now to solidify for the August through December period, when we're waiting for the central kitchen to open. But then after that, we are going out to bid for, for that part.
Are you able to determine right now whether, because in the last, I think, several months ago, you were looking at maybe potentially a billion dollars. Is that, have you been able to kind of solidify that number? Or is it still kind of out of the air depending on kitchen?
There's still some unknown, Julie, because we, we are in the process of, we're vetting out whether we rent a, a kitchen, an outside kitchen, and have the same source that we're resourcing to, to run the program at Pacific Sky, or do we need to vend meals? And so we're literally in the midst of that right now. So there, there will be further analysis as we get that more solidified. We're going to bring harder numbers to you, but we're really in that spot of trying to find a program that we can run for that to do with the year.
I guess for me, it's just I want to be able to, yeah, knowing those numbers and having, I don't want people to look at the reserve and start thinking that we're automatically plugged with cash at this point. There are still things that we need to consider that potentially are going to be, you know, serious, could be.
Yes, they're absolutely unknowns with that program. So, you know, as Mark said, a hundred thousand dollars may not cover it. We do have the Fund Seventeen, which is also there to support Pacific Sky, and so we have some flexibility with that in the beginning. And we are confident that once we get the full program up and running, that it will not be the same hit. But that first, you know, three to five months of the program is where the unknown is, the big unknown.
Yeah, I agree with you, Julie. I think we want to make sure that for the run rate or past those first two months, we understand we can spend Seventeen for that. But that we're budgeting with enough cushion, because we don't know what we're going to get as far as bids on ready night kitchen, or we're going to do it in the captain house, or how it's going to work. So we're just going to make sure we're not under budgeting for the long-term costs of providing those meals that we're required to provide now.
Is, is the Pacific Sky's kitchen going to be big enough? And I'm just thinking, because I know we have a big learning curve that we're going to have to overcome once we start cooking. Are there districts, neighboring districts that are, that don't have a kitchen? That perhaps we can be their kitchen and, and then we become somebody that's making money in providing their lunches? I don't want to get, you know, it's going to be enough to make our own, but it just seems to me that it's a potential money hanger.
Well, first of all, as far as public schools, I think we're the, we're one of the last ones in San Diego County that didn't have a kitchen. So that being said, you know, we would obviously entertain that as an option, but I think the first thing is obviously to kick up and running with our program. And the, the level of need we see, and so we're anticipating a level of need of approximately seventy-five percent of students as opposed to somewhere in the twenty percent range that we're seeing with the choice ledge prior to this year, the coming future.
I appreciate you thinking that thought, but I don't think we want to be in the food provision business.
I'm just remembering when I was a kid in cafeteria and the people that worked there with their hair in that. I don't anticipate that they're really in that.
You're back to Scottish? Okay. Got anything? I guess I would just ask, TNY, is there anything budgeted for a TK in that budget?
No, there's not.
And what would be the cost if you were providing TK to an alderman?
I think we, in our last presentation, for about five hundred students, it's around four million dollars.
A four million dollars, but.
Let's not overlook the fact that we have to do something with the facility before we can even implement.
Right.
Yeah, so there's the place for the TK kid to go, and then there's the four million dollar area cost for not reflected in there.
There's a lot of uncertainty, both with TK and with the meal program that we've got, got to keep reserved for.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's a good point. I just want to, that sounds like that's at least what I'm doing right there, so. Keep an eye on it.
Yes, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the second interim budget report?
I'll move it through.
So, sir?
I'll say.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Is opposed? The motion to approve the second interim budget report is passed. First items are two point one for review reminder of upcoming DMS events. Twelve point two for review reminder of upcoming district DMS, DMS events. Well, they're in your agenda, well, they're, it's way on the screen, but they're in your agenda. And two point, twelve point three is a board review summary items for the April twenty twenty-two regular board meeting.
I don't have any items in the board meeting, but I did say earlier about getting school play visits back on the schedule.
You have done some, but nothing as well while we were doing it.
Yeah, getting back to our normal.
Yeah, monthly.
It might have dealt a lot with how to get it.
Yeah.
Especially schools with principals that we have that live recently. What are we going to have something come back from last week for the information?
I think it's something next week.
Yeah, because you, yeah, I think we should clarify that, Molly, like about the, the last, last month, I think we had kind of asked for some more information about the PS acquisitions. And can you kind of clarify what?
So that information could be presented at, we're looking for it to confirm a date for a workshop and then, and for the April board meeting. Could be heading on if it's in with the workshop that we're looking to confirm a date for and or that. It needs to be before May fifteenth.
Would it be a separate workshop from this? We have a budget workshop, the quality, would it be separate from that, or?
Yeah, we have to confirm the time and date for the actual that workshop and to determine the agenda. So we have to, we have, we have to do that, because now there's other things on that same night, and that's.
Oh, I got you, I got you, okay.
So we'll confirm that.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think we need to default if we can't find a date that should go on the agenda.
Yeah, but let's find a date for certain for that, because money is to, to get. I think we can definitely find a date, so we can look at it before that April meeting. I mean, I can, we'll be default, but I love the same prior.
That's what I'm saying.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so then, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.